Open our meeting, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States and America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we can start with our annual meeting. And the first order of business there is to adopt the village rules of order as we have for the last two years. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then as for appointments, for deputy mayor, we have Jackie Kelly, for village clerk, Anita S. Klein, and also all of these appointments go through for 2024?
No, for 2025.
Sorry, 2025, yes. So I won't repeat that every time. Village treasurer, Mindy Bado, deputy village treasurer and clerk, Tracy Hathaway, DQW superintendent Brad Hathaway, village attorney Janet Bliss, associate justice Dean Dietrich with an annual compensation of $2,000. Deputy village clerk is Jennifer Hayes. Administrative committee, it is Katie Brennan and Mark Galvin. Joint youth commission, Katie Brennan and Andrew Quinn. Village historian Karen Fowles with an annual compensation of $1,000. Village audit committee is once again the board of trustees. Local government liaison is Art Devlin and Jackie Kelly. Joint town and village community development board, Art Devlin and Jackie Kelly. League committee Jackie Kelly. Community development, Katie Brennan and Andrew Quinn. And land code review Jackie Kelly and Lake Placid Business Association liaison Mark Galvin. If anyone has any questions or comments, otherwise I'll entertain a...
My generally question is, so Vicki Victoria Dick Duffy is the town, is the village's clerk?
Court clerk.
So Jennifer is backup.
She's something...
That's what I wanted to make sure because I was wondering about that because like if something or one we were talking about wanted to... Alright, that's fine. I make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Liaison appointments, trustee Galvin, trustee Brennan will be public works and electric department. Trustee Kelly and Quinn will be police and fire. As always, all trustees are welcome to speak as necessary with any of our department heads. And the salary and compensation for our trustees, we mayor at $13,000, deputy mayor $10,000, and trustee $7,500. These are all fixed for one more year. Unless you have any questions or comment on that, entertain a motion to accept the above appointments.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Procedural items, I can read each and every one if you want. You've all been given them, they're all public knowledge. If you want, we can take all seven at once. That's agreeable for all of you, all entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we come to village policies. I'll read just the policies. Workplace violence prevention policy, anti-discrimination and harassment, including sexual harassment, code of ethics policy, senior water and sewer rate policy, credit card policy, travel policy, flag hanging policy, utility billing adjustment policy, hiring of retired employees policy, procedure of procurement policies, purchasing policies, investment policies, manual check policy, mid-spark use policy, inactive records, storage policy and guidebook, electronic signature policy, post-issuance compliance procedures and policies, control substance and alcohol testing policies, both DOT and non-DOT, good citizen policy and ADA policy. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to accept.
So moved. I'll second.
All in...
Aye.
Aye. Good. Okay, the next one is designate Lake Placid News and Adirondack Daily Enterprise. It's the official newspapers in the village of Lake Placid. Designate radio SWSLP 100.7 FM, it's the official radio station in the village of Lake Placid for one year. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then the next one is to designate Knight and National Bank and Trust and Lake Placid Bank, Adirondack Bank and Community Bank and Knight Class and suppositories for the funds of Lake Placid Village Incorporated for the year as provided in section 4-412, sections 3 and 2 of municipal law.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Is there anything else anyone would like to bring to the board on the annual meeting? Okay, with that being said, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion, we adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. With that being the case, we will now go into a regular board meeting. We'll start with clerk items, regular board meeting minutes. They just went out recently. If you've had a chance to read them and you want to approve them now, or if you want to wait for the next board meeting.
I didn't have a chance to read them.
I mean, it's not a big deal. I mean, we can wait until next time if you guys would like. Sure, yeah. So let's just table that. If I have a motion to table that, please.
I'll make the motion to table it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item D, land purchase agreement with the historical society. My understanding of that is that we're waiting for Janet to just finalize some final details.
So let's, let me bring you up to speed, and speed is four o'clock this afternoon. We, I think I sent this out a while ago, there was a proposed assignment and assumption agreement and in what that means is the OSI who has the current option to purchase the 1.77 acres from the historical society would assign that agreement to the village. The village would assume the responsibility. Just to go over the terms of that option agreement, the option would have to be exercised by April 26th this year. And then we would have, whoever exercises the option, and assuming it's the village, would have to close on the purchase within 45 days of the date we exercise the option. That means as far as Mindy's concerned, that we would have to have at a minimum $249,000 available with an extra 51 to reimburse OSI for its due diligence. I did recall...
We have to pay them first before we get the grant money?
Yep, well, you know we have a lot, it's a reimbursement.
Right. This property, I thought they got the money, the other money, but the grant came in.
That's, yeah, that's, okay, so that's, that's the money thing, which I know you've been involved in.
Yeah.
I haven't. So going back, that's the timetable. I requested an addition to the assignment and assumption agreement, which would be OSI indemnifying the village for anything that happens, happened before closing. They made that change, I received that change here in the last hour. Outstanding, however, is an agreement between the village and OSI with regard to the improvements to be made because those improvements, as I understand it, are all supposed to be made by OSI, but we have no agreement with them as to that. Once again, as of this afternoon, the attorney for OSI said he would get me a draft agreement. Claims, he's waiting for some information from Brad. I don't know whether that's true or not because I've not been involved. The information apparently he's waiting for has something to do with the extension of utilities to the site.
Which we agreed to do.
We thought it was already been turned.
And somebody named Chris Karas has been
Peter Karas, yes.
Allegedly been emailing and leaving voicemails for Brad. So I'm getting this from the attorney, so that's what he says is holding up that agreement.
Well, Brad will be home tonight, so.
Right, but we it was verbal, correct, Mindy, in the meeting when they explained about the utilities and Brad was like, not a problem, it's right there.
Well, apparently they're waiting for something concrete.
Okay.
Okay.
Obviously, the village can't assume the option and agree to exercise it in the next three weeks and close until we have this second piece, which is the agreement with OSI that says they're going to make the improvements. Now, one of the issues with regard to that agreement that says they're going to make the improvements is there's no money for those improvements right now. You have, there's no change, right, Mindy?
Yeah, they were still fundraising, right?
Well, and we don't have a grant.
We don't have the grant.
Right. But has, has the movement of the money in the grant for the purchase, you know, you were telling me it's got to move from one...
So it's got to go from the grant gateway into the SFS system. DC thought, they had it transitioned over. It's still sitting in the grant gateway platform. We spoke with Dylan on Friday and he can't move it until after April 4th because of the state budget. And then it will, will go, he just, he can't do anything on the state.
Right, but we're, you're comfortable that that grant is there.
Oh, yeah, I can see it, yeah. It's just in the wrong website.
So, having said all of that, where are we? We're where the board can take some action tonight. You can wait till the April 15th meetings, I think that's the next meeting, April 15th meeting, but that makes it pretty tight to have to exercise the option within nine days. But that's where we are. Quite frankly, there's too many cooks in the kitchen right now. We've got Arda, DEC, OSI, village, Roost, historical society, I guess. But I'm trying to narrow this down just between OSI and the village and tell you where we are. I will also tell you that the historical society is a little bit miffed from the standpoint that the original plan designed, based off way back when, when they signed the option agreement is according to them considerably different from the plan we have now. Most I think their biggest issue has to do with the fact that the plan we have now shows porta potties. They were concerned about porta potties being next door to them and the fact that there are four spots on the new plan, or the existing plan, or the final plan, I don't know what it is, that show trailer parking. And they were led to believe, I don't know if it's rightfully or wrongly, that trip, snowmobile trailers would not be allowed to park on this site. There's only four and it's not specifically saying snowmobile parking. It could be bike trailers, it could be canoe trailers, it could be
small campers.
Small campers.
RVs.
Yeah, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. But anyways.
I mean, anything that you can trailer from a, you know, an SUV.
Anyway, so they've asked for a meeting with the village, that's I said, we have no reason not to meet with them, but that's what they're going to press for. They're a little bit miffed. I would, I would use that word because they would, you know...
When I looked at trailers, you know, they're looking at snowmobile, most of the snowmobiles are gonna park at the, with their trailers, are gonna at the firehouse. You think they're gonna come in there?
Yes, that was the whole point. And the whole point of this parking lot was for snowmobile friends.
And for bikes and...
Yeah, yeah, that's, I would see fully, yeah.
Winter, wintertime wise, they're...
But there's only four spots.
Yes, yeah.
Because that is how many they're used to average that park there. But anyway, I'm just telling you that the, the historical society has asked for another meeting with the village. But that, that's the big picture. That's where we are right now.
And like, the, the reason why the plan was changed to include the trailer parking was because of Arda. Arda was the one that went back to OSI to say, we need trailer parking, for whatever reason, summer, winter.
Well, OSI has already also said in writing, in response to the historical society's attorney, that the trail was always meant for snowmobiles.
That's right.
And that's what the DEC and everybody is saying, the only thing you can use on the trail are horses and ATVs.
Unless you're an emergency vehicle.
Yes.
There you go. Is that emergency vehicle a horse?
No, maybe.
Well, when did you use horses if we have?
Yeah, right.
Ski during.
So anyway, that's the big picture, that's where we are.
I'm a little bit surprised if I could catch and refer to the, the original agreement. There was an original agreement and then the state was about to back out of the whole thing and said, we won't agree to this, it has to be open to everybody. And that's when it changed. They knew about that, so for them to go...
You're talking about the original option agreement.
Yeah, so for them to go all the way back to the beginning, it's changed, it had, but they were part of that, and that was part of the purpose.
Well, I, I don't disagree with you at all, and I think you're right on. And in fact, at one time during the negotiations, the historical society wanted deed restrictions. In other words, there'd be a restriction in the deed from, right, whoever, or manager, it was going to be historical to OSI, no snowmobiles. Right, I think, no snowmobiles at all. They were pretty, and they wanted the ability to approve anything that went on, on that site. OSI and DEC and all the money people said, absolutely not, we're not going to have any restrictions on this, we're, we're designing it to be ours, we're not going to... And that was absolutely negotiated out. Now, what the historical society is apparently saying now is, well, when we signed that option agreement, we had a plan in front of us that looked like this. I've explained to them that there's been many, many changes to that plan and where we are today and where we were then has gone through a lot of changes. The fact that they weren't involved in those changes, I don't know. I mean, that's between them and OSI at that point because OSI was the entity that was going to buy it. What they knew and didn't know, I don't know, but anyway, that's where we are.
Like you said, we're happy to meet. I mean, at some point, if they're not happy with it, then they can back out of the agreement, so we know where we are.
Well, we, no, they can't back, as long, if the option agreement is exercised by April 27th, 2024, is done. If it's not, and somebody asks for it to be extended, then they'd have some leverage to say, oh yeah, we'll extend it, then you do AV and say, yeah. So, that's where we are. OSI is not planning on exercising the option. I'm clear, I mean, that's, sure.
Yeah. Yeah, it's on us. The, the only thing that is, is concerning me is the fact that the state, I mean, this money has been in the budget since '23. And for somebody to say they've got to wait till April 1st to disperse it, that money's already been there, which I'm a little...
You mean, it's before? It's not to disperse it, it's just to get, because they upgraded their platforms, they can't move it from this platform to this platform for me to submit it for reimbursement.
Right.
It's got, it's just in the wrong platform.
Okay.
Because, you know, the state wants to do everything right before the end of the budget.
And it really has nothing to do with the new budget, does it? That money is there.
Right, then there's a lot.
That money's encumbered.
Yes, all, all transactions between those two are frozen until after everything is agreed.
The risk that I see is the future of when, how, and when the improvements will be made.
Where is?
Well, I guess, it, it, yeah, that would be the worst case if, but if the, if the village owns the property, then the worst case is the village is going to have to manage it and managing might not mean doing the wonderful plan, but something less, but still going to be a cost.
Yeah.
I mean, it'll be grading, it'll be pavement. Now, I'll also tell you that the OSI is having the company that did the environmental review, and by the way, that's come back, the DEC has said, you know, the levels are under. But OSI is having that company do a best practices plan for whoever the contractor is and make sure that when they add fill or take, take, fill away, that they don't disturb or those heavy metals and whatever else is there. So there's going to be a plan that will have to be adhered to in any grading or land movement, earth movement, which may or may not impact costs, I have no idea.
Yeah, and I don't want to put words in the board's mouth, but I think we discussed this and we're looking at it, at the worst case, nothing is done other than to buy the property. At least we've gone in, roughed out something, and there is something. And we're in good faith that OSI is going to come through with what they said, or a portion of it, whatever happens, happens. Is that what we pretty much agreed to?
I mean, any parking there?
Yeah. We need to do something.
I mean, just so that we know that in the worst case, when we're recession in two months and things begin to delay, we may not do anything more than rough out and have a parking spot.
OSI did apply for a leaf grant and the leaf committee, it still needs to go before the board, but there is a little bit of money there.
But, I mean, we just have to go on the faith that this is what's going to happen.
Yeah.
Right, because worst case scenario, we get it, but then we just even if we just grab it, we have...
Really, it's already gravel, people have parked there forever.
Well, there's a lot of grass growing up there. So I think, I think what you did, what the village and the member would have to do is complete the ingress and egress, you know, those two.
Yeah, we just need to...
Probably work with the historical society for barriers so people don't go onto their property. Which are, they're already there, right, kind of, by the barriers.
Yeah.
And then, and block off somehow that Bermuda Triangle where you come in, you're truly in...
Everybody parks right now, working there.
Yeah.
So it's not a big...
No. But I, I really would like to see this agreement that they're proposing for the improvements, but...
I just think it's going to be a lot of people listening, using that real trail.
Let's hope. I'm just, just sorry, a lot of people using it, I'm signing warm up, yeah.
But we know. So that's where we are, that's it, you know.
Okay, so are you proposing, I know at one point we talked about authorizing me tonight to sign this pending final review from your questions, or do you want to wait two more weeks?
Well, I think, I mean, you know where we are today, I think the, the big unknown to me is what the agreement is going to say, that it's going to obligate OSI to make the improvements in whether they're going to have a backdoor that lets them out of that.
Well, but they already do, I mean, we're willing to accept that already.
I, I don't know.
I mean, isn't that what we've talked about? I mean, if they were bargaining in good faith that they'll do that, but there's no requirement, I mean, the contract's only as good as it is anyhow.
Well, we're going to get the contract, I'm sure they're going to say, pending receipt of funds, they'll do the work.
Yeah.
And the big unknown is, see the funds.
So if, if we approve it tonight, we, we take our chances, right?
You may take your chances after we see their agreement too, because I'm, I'm sure they're going to say pending we, that's receiving money, we'll do the work.
So agree on it, pending the agreement?
I don't know, maybe, and I think we're...
We're agreeing to.
Take it come hell or high waters.
But I think, I would like the motion to say pending receipt and review, so OSI knows we have to see that and approve it.
Okay.
Because if they get, say, oh no, they're doing it anyway, there's no
Right.
There's no reason for them to move.
Right, come to the, yeah.
So if we wait till the 15th, does it delay anything? I mean...
Well, if you approve it now, she gets it within the next lead curve, whatever.
We can move forward, the option is...
You, you, you can tell me, okay, you know, go ahead, exercise the option, knowing that 45 days and the quotes.
Tell me what you wanted to say, I'll make a motion.
Well, I, I think perhaps it, you might want to say that the board approves the assignment and assumption agreement with OSI and pending receipt and review of the agreement between OSI and the village with regard to the responsibility for the improvements.
Review of, yes.
Yes.
Did you get that, Anita?
Most of it, it's all recording anyway, so.
So I mean...
And that, that upon receipt and review and agree, of that agreement and approval, the mayor is authorized to exercise the option.
Well spoken, Jackie.
Thank you, Arda. I made the motion.
I'll second.
I love coming forward.
Not many people can do that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I as well. Okay. Good. Cummings Road closure request for April 8th. One way, we discussed that.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Before we go any further on that, we were, there were some, they were going to notify, or someone was going to notify that people were affected, do you know if that ever happened?
I don't know. But that was Orda's responsibility to notify the miners and the Vicfords from, from that point.
We just make that part of the motion, it would be there.
I'm making motion that we approve the Cummings Road closure request per Orda notifying the residents on the road.
With the requirement that Orda notifies.
The residents on the road that it will be closed from the school to Main Street.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Will you tell them or do you want me to tell them? Because I didn't receive the email, they've sent it to you.
And Chad is on vacation, but yes. Alright.
Alright, so. Just...
I will notify.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. And item D is Lake Placid Marathon with updated route. I believe that's been run by Chuck Chuck.
Yes.
And Chuck Chuck approved it the other day, I saw it. So I'll make the motion for the updated marathon route.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Anything else?
One more item, the firefighters' contract for you to sign.
Okay.
You need contract for the drivers.
Okay, so I need a, a motion to approve me signing that.
I'll make the motion for the mayor to sign the fire drivers' contract through the International Brotherhood of Firefighters.
Sure.
Good job. Good job.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
That the last one?
No, well, that's, yes, thank you.
That was discussed this morning and the draft, it should be out in a couple of months and a few days.
Good.
You just want to stand or a copy of it? Stand.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all.
And thank you for all of you that have such hard work on these union contracts. They're never easy and especially COVID restrictions we have made it even harder yet. Good job. Okay. Moving to treasury items, approval of warrant allocated number 17. Do I have a motion?
Only the smallest ones, but ever, it was a baby, it was such a baby.
Watch out for next one.
Yeah, right. Not going to put those or anything in this one, that's why.
I have a motion.
So I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Night girls.
Aye. Anybody else?
I will.
Mindy, anything else come from the president?
No.
Is there anything under new business?
Yes. The town and conju, the village in conjunction with the town will be moving forward with an application for a downtown revitalization grant. The next steps is to form a committee to discuss what areas, what projects, this is the first step. So that's where we're at now. I think they haven't even made the announcement for the grant application. I think that will happen sometime in June, but we all have a few months. So Adam DeSantis, who is the economic development director, will be leading the charge on that.
Didn't you already have a meeting about it?
We, no, no, we, at Lisa G's, there was a meeting with interested residents, business owners, because there is some, we need some buy-in. From the public, uh, it's a ten million dollar grant that needs to be matched with private investment. So it was just a, an initial meeting to see if the interest was there, and there appears to be interest.
It doesn't mean that, once we start into this process, it'll, everyone still will, but that's.
That's right, it is just the initial process, that's right.
Right, anything else under new business? Anything under old business?
Yes, I have a few things, um. Katie, Chuck and I and Darcy met about noise, revamping the noise ordinance. Um, we're in the process of drafting some amendments, I did find. From Saratoga and from New York City, um, certain restrictions. Regarding sidewalk noise and noise emanating from places of business, and there are some interesting. Things that we can look at and incorporate, which of course we'll bring, you know, first to Chuck and then to Janet to see if, uh. It would hold up. Um, but we're moving forward with that, and we should have something in place before the summer. At least an amendment, you know, going through a public hearing, um, the second thing.
Maybe we can have it in time to go to our next workshop, we'll see.
Oh, maybe, yeah, if, if Katie had been on, she probably would have been able to offer. Um, the next workshop will be Tuesday, yeah, right. Um, the second thing is Anita and I have been working on ADA compliance. Um, I found a website that appears to be, and I, I'm pretty sure it's an advocacy website, not a third-party website, which is not a money grab. Uh, very informative, um, Anita has signed up for ADA Compliance Officer Class, it's a six-hour class. Um, we're also starting this self-evaluation. Um, looking at departments and programs. Um, it, it's a very, very, um, intuitive website that gives us all of the, I guess we are considered. State and local Division Two, so there are certain, um. Things that we have to follow and, um. ADA Title Two Action Guide for State and Local Governments, and we've got some action steps, so we'll be working on that.
Great, good notice.
Um. Yeah, there's something else, hang on, something else in my file. Darn, hey. Two. When they're swinging a minute.
My one question is. On the weekends, they're setting up on the crosswalk. With flyers.
With what?
Flyers.
Who is?
The.
Jehovah Waymen?
Oh, they're on the parking lot, yeah.
Oh, but they're on the crosswalk.
Oh, they've been, last I saw them, they were like in that open area.
Yeah, they're in the open area, there is a crosswalk there, but they're in the, they're on the public, they're on the bricks, yeah.
Alright, so they're, I'm just asking because of, you know.
They don't obstruct anything.
They can't, they can't impede.
Well, okay, I'm just asking about it, alright. I noticed it this weekend.
Give me, can I, give it something else that was important?
To leave it the well, right?
Alright, now.
Chime in at any.
Nothing.
So that was my one, and the other one was we talked about the bricks. And everything, oh, they're holding up, so I went around the Lake Placid, and there are.
You're talking about the Cambridge bricks?
The ones coming from the church down towards the.
The black bricks. The gray bricks.
No, 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 the old bricks. The ones, yeah, the old ones in front of the beach house?
Nope, they start, that, by the.
They're the Cambridge bricks, I think you're talking about.
The red bricks or the black bricks, oh, the black bricks.
Well, there's also gold bricks too, which one, that sounds like if you're describing, the Cambridge bricks are kind of a gold, earthy color.
They're, they're this size, they're square.
The big ones, yes, those are the one, not.
What color are they?
You walk from.
Well.
Are they?
Post office down to.
The beach or the tent courts, and turn left, so those are the Cambridge bricks.
Oh, okay.
Those are the Cambridge bricks.
And they're, they're not what we're talking about, holding up, that's the reason we stopped and went to the tackle blocks.
Okay, that was my only question.
Oh, they know that.
Despite reinsurance from the rep and our rep, that they were good, they, they weren't now.
I know the red ones are, so I was just wanting to.
No, no, those are the tops.
Ones are better, the actual ones. And the reds, some, you know, before they started making them themselves, our, we have reds that go from here down to, um. High Peak Cycle, I think those are some of the originals, and they're, they're in great shape. And early cans, it's just when they started, when they stopped making that at the factory, and they said, oh, we can make these for you. It got interior.
Alright, that was my only questions.
And also, unfortunately, if you're coming down the hill on Serenac Avenue, there's some scratches in there, but boy, that happened within. Two, three weeks of going in, I don't know.
That's in the tackle brick.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I don't, we haven't found any way to put that out. That's, that's the problem with construction, there's lots of dangerous things, you can't wait, like, when you do home construction, you can't wait for those hammers and. All to be gone, so.
Jackie, remember.
I remembered.
Yes.
Uh, the parking, the annual parking permits are now active, um, Stacy has them. Um, people have been applying for it, we also have the new policy, and I don't have a copy of it with me, but. It does allow for people with, um, handicap parking, this, thank you, well. Within DMV, it's still called handicap, and I, I don't know, so anyway, so they can park legally in permit. Parking spots in the handicap, um, if they have a parking permit, and that is a policy. That the police department is aware of, so we're moving forward with that.
Good, thank you for your work.
Yeah, I saw that today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I've got no mayor items, but any division reports?
Yes, yes, yeah.
And no meeting of the fire.
We're going, I'm going to, Arda's going, did you reach out to Derek?
I did, and if he, you know, something doesn't come up, he's willing to plan on attending, also, I think he's gonna see a very fond of attendance, but. Yeah, nice to have some.
Yes.
Yeah, vote of confidence. Um. Anybody online that has a comment or a question for the board?
Okay, I need to motion, will you join?
I'm not gonna ask, yes.
All in favor? All second, it's a pleasure, then Scott used to be.
Is that fire meeting this, tonight?
Well, right.
So.
I was just turn out for the, uh, three AM fire last week.